Hey, recording started.
Thank you so much. All right, I'd like to call this meeting of the Inland Wetlands Commission to order on January twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty five, regular meeting at seven oh three P M. Um, start with some introductions. We don't have anyone up there, so let's start this way. That would be you, sir.
Good evening, Nico Jordan, uh, Vice Chair in the Wetlands Commissioner.
Danielle Monroe, Chair, Inland Wetlands Commission.
That pair for alternate.
Yeah, it's seeming commissioner.
Dave McCollum in the Wetlands.
Amanda Martinez, Recording Secretary.
Thank you all so much. Um, as we have some openings here tonight, I would like to go ahead and seat Pat Parafort for, uh, Laura Ferguson. Do you accept?
I accept.
Okay, great. Veiled asked. All right, um, before we get into business, are there any amendments to the agenda or any unlisted items that need to be added?
Thank you for asking, Madam Chair. I have none for you this evening.
Great, okay. Uh, no amendments at this time, so no changes. Let's see. Uh, any members need to make a modification to the agenda tonight?
Nothing for me.
So we can start with old business. We have one oh seven Plum Trees Road, excavation of soil material from the water force.
I owe the commission an apology. Between the lull of the holidays and the flurry of activities since I have had this one go over the wayside, I apologize. Um, no excuse other than to say, uh, please give me an opportunity to have this rectified for the commission's next meeting in February.
Shall we caucus and decide whether we're going to get permission to keep the can till our next meeting?
Words for me.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, uh, the, so then we have new business. We have number seven, excuse me, number forty seven Star Lane, construction of an onsite subsurface sewage disposal system, stormwater management system, driveway, and regrading activities associated with a new single-family dwelling. And I see that we have a present.
We do.
Your name.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Vesta, representing the applicants. If not here tonight with me, oh, there he is.
Very nice, too. That was fantastic.
So, um, is everyone familiar with with the subdivision up there or not?
You are.
I've been up there for a while.
Yeah, I just gave a quick overview of this. This is the subdivision Star Lane. The original part, um, Star Lane goes down towards fifty eight. Uh, this is the new section here, which is highlighted in blue. It was approximately, I think it was twenty-five lots at the time. When I did this back in two thousand, two thousand and one-ish timeframe, uh, this is the last lot in the subdivision that's gonna be, that's gonna be developed. There's, there's one of the lot here, um, that the original owners, the Gamma Boys, don't, don't own that one. So this, the person who owned this house, this house here, or home this lot here as well, kind of developed it, but every one's been developed. We also gave out like twenty-five acres of open space on the off of Steck Lane in that way. So this is the highlighting green is the parcel itself. Originally, when we first approved it, had it approved, there was a through road coming from Star Lane out the countryway. Uh, and that was, I think we lost, I think the subdivision actually, um, expired, never finished up. Then we went, came back in and they, they, they terminated, uh, the little short road off of, um, Country Way and ended, called, and ended the Star Lane without the through road. So that is no longer, that was no longer there. So you probably went up there and seen that. So that's what, that's the overall, what we're, what we're looking at. So again, this parcel is accessed off of Star, Star Lane, the cul-de-sac, common driver with forty-seven, forty-nine, uh, Star Lane, has already been developed and coming into lot number, um, forty-seven. There's an existing house, the original Steck House, which is right in here. Uh, that's still, that's still present there. So what we look, we've got approximately, um, uh, it's located in the R eighty zone. This is four point five acres. There's actually frontage on Star Lane over here. There's a little piece over here that actually was the old roadway that went across before we, we terminated that. But there's actually, actually access way coming off the Star Lane, the cul-de-sac, into the property. Uh, this design is pretty much, there's the driveway coming in is what was originally approved back in two thousand, two thousand and four-ish timeframe. The house was pushed back a little further, we pushed it a little more closely, moved it up forward a little bit of property to provide some access for potential pool and the homeowners, the homeowners want one. Um, wetlands were flagged back in two thousand and one by, um, Roy Shook, um, which is highlighted in green, which goes by sex, the, um, property along the westerly side there that continues from the south all the way to the north of the prop, of the overall subdivision. And there's a small pocket, um, in the property that has a little mid-water course that runs down towards the, uh, the wetlands itself. Um, as we talked about, we are providing a, providing a new single-family house, five bedrooms, septic system, driveway coming in, some site grading, and then a detention system for their, for the increase, your detain, increase in runoff. Uh, what you see in red is the upland review area that we're looking at. So we're looking at a small piece of wetlands, upland review area here and through the end of the detention system we've got going on down there. Terms of so and erosion control, we're providing silk fence around a disturbed areas we're looking at, um, and track me path coming into the property. Um, we've got, well, the property and, uh, stockpile area. So that's really the overall view of the product, what we're proposing to do for this project.
Thank you very much. Questions or decisions?
The detention center itself is located parallel to and very close to. What's, what is the impact of that detention center on the north-south running? What's the distance between that?
Rulerless.
Scales.
Scale, scale.
My rulers is scales. We've got about fifty, fifty feet, like forty feet from the level spread of it, from the actual detention system, we go over fifty feet away. And test holes were done in the area. So we knew, I mean, we, we peppered this property with, if you look at my plans, if we peppered this property with, um, because it was changed multiple times, lot lines changes, we even said multiple test holes. I think we did probably twenty test holes out here. So, so we've got, we've got test holes in it and right in the area itself. So we know that's gonna work and, and per test as well. So.
Is that openly type this center or is it?
It's, it's underground. It's sub, it's subsurface.
So the, the water from the driveways going in, what's?
Right. We've got, we've got the, the roof leaks coming in. We've got a catch basin here to bring in, I think, down, down to this good area here. Um, you know, the site is silly steep from back, from about behind the house back, it drops off considerably. There's some, there's some rock back in that area, this area here. Um, it's not the greatest soil, but it, it will, it will drain, does drain and does have fairly decent soils in the area. And then we got a, got the detention system, because this property now heads up. This area is somewhat flatting here, then it rises up towards the north, then it's flat and then slopes out towards the west here. So that's the way the tension was kind of a tricky spot to put it, um, where we can get the work in here.
Mr. Devesta, you mentioned that it was flagged back in two thousand and one originally. When was the soils report done?
Two thousand?
So we don't have any updated?
No, no. It hasn't, hasn't been disturbed. Property has not been disturbed. The only thing was disturbed, this property, the original owner, um, the law, if everybody remembers, I don't remember this, was back, back of what, twenty-five years ago, I guess, back now, twenty years ago. He went in there and took all the big oaks out of this property. So he really took all the big oaks out of there. He loved, if you saw the, the house that he lived in here, it was all stone. He took a lot of stone from the property and looked, took a lot of stone walls out and things like that, stuff that would, that the zoning commission, we had an issue with that as well. So, um, so really the property has not only been disturbed, except for removing a lot of large trees and some of the stone walls out there. So I mean, there's a stone wall, still on my plan here, which is no longer there, which was, was removed. So.
That was between two thousand and one and now, or that was previous to?
Probably around two thousand, two, two thousand and four, maybe.
Okay, so after it was already?
I had stopped working on it. I had gotten all the approvals. I stopped working on it. I know what's gonna happen with this guy. He lost the property. And then the Gammas, um, bought the property and they finished, they finished it out. He actually, well, actually put them to drop the road in, but anything, I didn't bump into lots he got onto. The Gammas did all that.
Like, I'm trying to situate for myself. The cul-de-sacs at the very end of that driveway is going?
Yeah.
Was there a house in the property before? I'm picturing a house.
Yeah, there's a house. Here's, here's the cul-de-sac here.
Right.
The blue dash line coming in our property, the existing house right here.
Okay.
Can I see a range? Because was there a driveway? Did it ever go through to that other?
Just to Steck Lane?
Steck Lane, yeah.
Technically, yes. Yes. And that's how, that's how the actual access to the old Steck House was.
That's a cool, yeah.
It was, um, Steck Lane is right here. So that was the actual access to the property. You can see the driveway coming in, actually branches around, like we'll look around the house because it continues down. That was, that was the actual house. That's why it's called Steck Lane. It was Steck, Troy Steck's house.
Um, can I have a couple of questions about the, yeah, so on the other site layer? All, so all, are you proposing to catch like all of the stormwater runoff from the house and the driveway?
Correct. And then some, and then some, um, areas, anything that's draining, anything that's draining down from here on the driveway could be collected to there. So.
How will the driveway, um, carry it? Is it curved or are there pipes on the side?
No, there's no, no catch basin. It's just me following the edge of the driveway.
With a curb like holding the water?
Possibly curbing or even, I mean, just like a little burn, a little burn with dirt, dirt and grass. Over time, it does anyway. The, the grass will grow up and the areas will just come like, slight, no, no curbing. I don't think Pete wants to go put in any kind of, uh, Belgium block curbing or anything like that. Unless the potential buyers want it, he'll go put it in. No.
I'm just thinking of like the big, some of the big storms that we've been getting and the potential gap where it's like seven inches, twelve inches, like two inches an hour, like, and how, if you think this will be enough to carry all that water and then to go into those two catch basins and then a six inch, um, I think I thought that was six inch PVC carrying it to the stormwater. Is that gonna be enough like gauge to carry?
Well, again, we don't, we can't design on a storm that's gonna produce two inches an hour or more than that, or nine, ten inches of rain. I mean, it's just impossible. We can do it, but you know, I don't think the homeowners, homeowners are gonna wanna pay for that kind of infrastructure. Even a town, even a town drainage systems can't handle where I like that. So yeah, we, we design more on the, on the more frequent storms. Of course, you're gonna get to see those, like, you know, gully washers and stuff like that. Uh, then we'll overflow and continue to flow down towards, I think, I think it's gonna flow to the west anyway, towards the wetlands in that area.
Yeah, I guess that's kind of what I'm wondering is.
It's all downhill gradient. Yeah, like the way that I'm reading is it's all downhill gradient this way anyways, so it's flowing in that direction.
Everything's flowing down this way and it's also flowing this way.
Yep.
So you're gonna have some sheet pull off the driveway, the rest picked up by the?
It's picked up, yeah, correct.
What is the, uh, standard now? Is that hundred-year storm?
Right.
How many inches?
Um, I forget what, uh, what the NOAA Atlas fourteen, but that sounds like.
Now it's twelve to twelve. Not just, it's midnight to midnight.
Right. So is that designed to handle?
I gotta design for twenty-five-year storm. Okay. I didn't realize it was up to a hundred-year storm now, but I think.
It, it just changed.
To me, my, my personal, that's, that's absurd for a residential home.
But when the,
It is.
When these, when this, uh, subdivision was done, I think it was a twenty-five.
Twenty-five years.
Right. The, the one hundred-year storm design standard was implemented when, uh, former town engineer, James DeMayo, was with us. And that has, that's been the standard that we've consistently used for all applications that have been submitted since.
Was it a hundred or fifty?
Hundred, since James was here.
It didn't do a hundred years, I didn't do a hundred-year storm. I don't think I, I hope Todd talks a lot about that. I'm sure Todd will be looking at that stuff.
Yes, he will be. Right.
I'm, um.
That's just, in my, in my professional opinion, that's just, that's for residential, for homes. That's just outrageous.
Well, it just won't function. Like we've seen in multiple storms this year that we had, like.
It's overkill.
I mean, a six-inch pipe won't carry, it'll just be clogged immediately and it will fail. The system will fail.
Right. So you want me to design just for a hundred-year storms in, in the piping?
Well, I think we have a regulation actually, correct me if I'm wrong, but we do require that now.
It's the, the, the standards are carried with the Public Works Department, okay? And the reviews, the engineering reviews, um, that this commission requests, they are conducted by Todd Ritchie, that's the Long International Corporation. And he essentially takes the standards that's, that's required from the Public Works Department and implements them for his reviews.
So Todd Ritchie could decide if I had, is it undersized?
I, I, I mean, I'm not sure what.
I'm not an engineer, so.
Right. And, and neither am I. So I, I'm not sure what parts would be undersized per se, but, but if, but if there's a part that doesn't meet the design standard, you'll, you'll have Mr. Devesta corrected.
Right, right. With the negative impact to that overflows, if it doesn't, it's gonna really cause issues to the homeowner, not necessarily for, because the drainage is just gonna, the water's gonna flow where it would naturally flow downhill anyways and fall there to begin with. So that, that, that negative impact is at the cost of the homeowner per se.
Right.
Like, it's not overfilled, it's not gonna necessarily have, have a negative impact on the detention center itself.
It's all, it's all woods backing it too. So it hasn't, has no impact on, on any neighbors. You know, and for those neighbors, you're gonna be well downstream of this and got a lot of bigger watershed than that in this area.
Which is what would happen if there was no house there, essentially, is what I'm getting at. It's.
What are the other two? That septic and what's the one?
Well, septic.
That's the water distribution.
Gallows.
This is up, up well.
Yep.
That's our retaining walls.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, okay. So the only thing that's really pertinent that's within the upland review area is that detention center.
And then this.
And that little cutoff right there.
Right there. That's it.
And are you gonna be doing grading, grading to the side of the driveway? Correct?
Where?
Grading work?
Here.
Yeah, you're gonna grade that.
We, we, we using boulder retain walls or whatever, whatever the client would like to use over there, just to cut down the, the amount of grading. Okay. If I, if I kept this not great, you know, it was, this would go way out here. So by, by putting, you know, terrorist work retaining wall in there, yep, that would keep that, that, that limits some of the retain, uh, grading going on.
No, I understand.
Do you have more questions?
All right, not really. To be honest.
Nico.
Um, do we have a current functions and values for the property?
In terms of what?
In terms of the wetlands.
No.
Can we get current functions and values assessment?
Uh, what, the wetlands themselves?
Yeah, I'm just curious. I have, like, I'm just curious about that little wetland area there and then whatever, all the, what's going on?
Just, that's what you're looking for. I mean, we'll, we'll get you something. Can I have a clear, what is that? Yeah, I mean.
The functions, values assessment, do you wanna ask?
So if, if, if.
We've never asked for one before, that's why I'm asking.
You have. Um, or, or they've just been provided for you as part of the initial, uh, submission for the application. A, a soils report will describe the onsite, the onsite soil. So it'll tell you what soil series are present and where they are. A functions and values assessment, and Mr. Devesta, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, it, it essentially tells you what the functions of the onsite wetlands are, their values, and what those would be with respect to the proposed, the proposed activities that would be taking place within your regulated upland review area. So then, so that, so they, 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 um, uh, they work off of each other. Um, you, you really need one to, or you, you need one to be able to understand the other.
But would you be asking for that for something where you're impacting the wetlands, like working the wetlands versus being away from the wetlands?
It's, it's really at the commission's discretion.
Because isn't that the normal value of wetlands right now? It's undisturbed. If you're disturbing, I can see it. If you're not disturbed.
Right, right.
I mean, I, I don't know. I'm asking.
So, so there, so I'm, I'm not sure if you can recall what a functions and values assessment looks like, but, but there are, but there's information in terms of wildlife habitat, flood storage capacity, pollutant removal. I, I remember that nature. Right, that, and, and it essentially tells you what the onsite wetlands are good and are not good at.
It'll say what species of the?
Right. A, a soils report by itself wouldn't have that information. It's just gonna tell you, these are the onsite soil series that are here and this is where, you know, this is roughly where they are. Uh, sometimes you'll get a USGS map, depending on what soil scientists you're working with. If it's more current, you have that by standard. Sometimes for an older report, you may not have that. Um, that necessarily says it's a defect for this application per se. It's just something for you to consider. Um, so if, if, if this commission wants to request a new soils report and/or functions or values assessment, it is the time to ask.
The soil wouldn't change. Soil doesn't change in twenty years.
It, you would be surprised.
There's no building been done on this in.
Well, wetlands can move. They are.
Not that much, not from a twenty-year soil.
Probably not.
But the, the wetland soil take like thousands of years to.
Will a water course shift? Like a.
There's no water. And we're, I mean, the, the detention system is downgrading of, of this pool wetlands pocket and it's above this one here, but I mean, it's just, but this, this is really the only thing that's gonna be affecting this little pocket right in here.
There is, there is a water course that's shown to be connecting the two wetlands.
Right, yeah.
So I only ask this because it, it could be useful. I was gonna stop, I might personally have stopped short of asking for like a current wetlands delineation because this one's twenty.
Twenty-four years old at this point.
Twenty-four, twenty-three. So I mean, that's not a ton of time, but I've seen like things change in the course of a decade or one.
But you also have to think about too now, we have, so scientists out there, that may not be wetlands. You know, that's, that, that's, this, this pocket, this pocket may, he may say, you know what, Roy Shook looked at thing, he would, he, he'll agree with them.
That makes our job a lot easier.
Well, yeah, mine too. But I'm just saying, I mean, it could, it could go, it could go the other way. It could go bigger or smaller. Yeah, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we were missing anything.
So it might be.
I don't think, I don't think it would miss anything. I think again, just like, like Pat's saying, is this, that a lot hasn't been developed. You know, I told you about what happened out there, trees and some stuff, some walls out there. So really, um, and I've been out to these properties for the last twenty-five years now, so twenty-five.
I mean, I'm not trying to necessarily put you out through like extensive like procedures for no reason, like obviously.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just, I wanna know what's there. So at least a sidewalk, I would.
Well, yeah, the sidewalk, yeah. I mean, it costs, there, there, there's a cost involved in that too, having both the wetlands redone and an evaluation.
Yeah.
I think a set block would be more prevalent than even, it would be more useful than you mean.
Having a professional conductive function evaluation doesn't give us, I think, I mean, yeah, I.
You can walk in there and not that we're soils, I'm clear now, but if, if there was a massive change in delineation, it would be very obvious to us visually, what, just seeing that there is a change. What, what constitutes that change, we cannot speak to. But if you take a look, you can decide if it's relevant.
Yeah, right. I was gonna stop short of asking for a whole delineation, a neutralization.
I didn't do my due diligence.
I think it's been done. I just wanna make sure that things are there and how they appear to be on, you know, this little show.
Right. Depending on how soon this commission goes out. If you, I, I don't know, I have, as someone who hasn't been to the site myself, I can't say for sure whether or not the property is still, that area of the property is still covered by snow. Who knows what will happen between now and when the commission does ultimately schedule their sidewalk, uh, on this property. But i- if, if you can't visually see what's going on because there's snow cover there, do, do you want to rely on that one sidewalk and your layman observations to figure out where or where the wetlands are?
Or what species of places.
Right, right.
I mean, what we could do is we could have this, our surveyor locate the flags back out there so you can see it. And then maybe just maybe from flag forty-one to forty-nine, so you get, I mean, that's this area here is where nothing, nothing like happening. This is the area I think you're mostly concerned, it sounds like. So we have this, we have the, the surveyor locate those flags out there for you and then anything else you want, you know, locate and maybe have.
The detention.
The base and then four corners on this, on the house. And that's really it.
I mean, the basins that I would even like to know. And I apologize for not doing my due diligence because I know it was provided, but it's gonna be subsurface, it's going to be, what is it gonna constitute the basin itself? Is it just going to be dug rock?
Hollow chambers.
Just, okay, just chambers. Yep. So, but there's not gonna be anything artificial per se poured there or any massive structure. It's just gonna be.
Hollow chamber, hollow chambers and then, then the level spread of that will allow the water to shoot.
Yep. Okay, got it. Yep, no, I know, I know exactly what you're saying. Okay.
If the six-inch pipe is not enough to carry water from the floodstorms, where would the water, where do you think the water will go from there? So it's coming down the driveway. Will it continue down the driveway or will it follow?
Same place it would naturally anyways.
Sheet flow out and head down towards the, um, towards the wetlands of the west, which is going to do with or without that. How long is it from where the cul-de-sac down?
Then it's collecting.
Well, I mean, you got, you got, you got the, you got the, this is the common driveway here, the section here up there, here up there. Sheep ballpark. Interesting, a hundred fifty feet, hundred fifty, two hundred feet tops.
Okay. Um, will you have, um, is that whole hill that the driveway is on there gonna be graded or is that the existing grades that you're showing there? Those, those contour lines? So there's.
These are, these are proposed grades. There's a, there's a, there's a little, little knot right here.
Yeah.
We're going around that.
Like a rock knob, a ledge knob.
Might be some rock in that area. But just get a little, little character. So leaving that, leaving that rock in there, going around it and coming to the house and getting a little more privacy and stuff like that.
So, yeah, okay. I was just wondering about aggressiveness possibly with the material of that grading, like under the driveway. It's not my job. I needed to worry about that. Like, water shee flowing off the driveway.
Yeah. We don't even discuss that, right? It's gonna come off, it's gonna be flowing down here, flowing up, but it doesn't get into the catch base basin and it's gonna keep, keep.
Has it traveled down the gradient, the proposed gradient site?
Yeah, here?
Yeah. Is that lawn or?
Well, it's gonna be lawn area in here, but then it'll be all this little, we'll keep, anything with the darker green will be left natural. I'm, I started to give an idea where the, you know, excavation going on through here, let them a little lighter green. The darker green here will be left, that's the natural, that'll stay.
So Nico, are you saying that your concern is that water flow is going to sheet off the driveway, down those contours and down into that wetland area?
Not necessarily concerned, just, you know, wanting to understand that that's the process.
Wouldn't it do it now?
Yeah, that's what I'm doing now.
Wouldn't it do it now? Let's say this.
Water.
Isn't, right now, it's gonna sheet flow that way anyway. You have a six-inch pipe that you're filling up with water. I'm a lot more concerned, a lot than that six-inch pipe.
I think this.
Wait, I'm confused. What are you saying? So, so, yeah, where the existing conditions are forced and.
Right. Existing conditions right now.
So that, that.
It's blowing that, but you're not changing the contours.
But now we're talking about concentrating water. So we're just talking about impervious surfaces that carry, that concentrate more water.
Right.
So where is that gonna go once it's all pooled and quickly in a big storm?
I.
Will it actually be able to get to the stormwater management system where it's just gonna go?
I, I don't mean to interrupt, but I think what may be conducive to your discussion right now, and I don't know how difficult this, it would be for Mr. Devesta to prepare this, but you may want to consider looking at what's called a pre and post development watershed map. And that lets you know, okay, this is what the existing conditions are, you know, as if nothing is there. And then when the driveway is installed, when the stormwater management system components are, then, then you'll be able to see the change in surface water flow and where that's going with respect to what's being installed on the property.
That's the report.
Uh, is it?
Yes, it is. That's more or less a tough graphical math.
Uh, yeah, I, I, I only ask because I didn't see it in the hydrology section. I'm sorry?
In the hydrology chapter.
Okay, let me pull it up on the screen. So I'm, I'm going to the hydro cabinet.
No, not going to, in the area before.
Okay, that's mine.
Hydrology course too, because we think it put in this. Oh, just screen, just screen it in there.
Oh, my goodness. I'm sorry, guys.
Always backing me up.
Old man contest.
Yeah. There, this is better.
Stop. Right there, right there. It's pre, that's pre-development. There's post.
Okay. And, and, and just so you, for now.
We can't read that?
I'm not quite understanding it.
I, I've only, like, some of the commissioners here, I myself have only done a cursory review of this application. Um, uh, before this commission renders its, renders its decision, uh, you would, you should expect a report from myself and from Todd Ritchie. Um, and, and I'm not sure what, what Todd's comments will be, uh, pertinent to, but I, I would take a look at this myself just so I can familiarize myself and understand what, what Doug has, what Doug is proposing to design. Um, and if, if there are any questions that are a part of that, you'll see what I have to say.
Tonight, we're deciding whether or not we're gonna accept the application for review and under which process we're going to accept the application.
Right.
We're having some conversation to give you an idea of what we're thinking about and what we're gonna be asking.
Right. So, so you guys would want to decide at this juncture whether or not you believe this application does or does not need to go by public hearing. When you want to schedule a sidewalk, I'm assuming you four do, and what you would like to be demarcated out there when you go. And any supplemental documents that have not already been provided that you would like as part of your review.
How are we feeling?
Personally, I don't think, I don't think public is necessary unless a single family residence, I'm familiar with the area as well. I'm okay with doing it in-house. I have nothing additional that I would request, but I would like to take a further, I didn't do, I didn't look heavily into it, which I should have, so I apologize. So just wanna look at it a little bit more and hear Dave's comments as well to maybe give some guidance on issues, but I really don't foresee anything of chaos.
I don't think you need the uh, public hearing. I don't think the interest is there. To me, it looks like a very straightforward application. I don't think they get much simpler than this.
Nico, did you have thoughts on public?
Sorry.
Did I just have one question?
Sure.
Your history here is longer than mine.
Okay.
Uh, when the other parcels were developed, was there public site, uh, a, a public process? For any of those? And if so, did it generate a great deal of interest?
So I, not to go back, uh, the, the twenty some odd years since Doug did the subdivision.
Getting all right, yeah, thanks.
Yeah. Sorry, um, so, so the, the subdivision application, I, I, that would have been.
Right, the subdivision, like, the, well, this was, basically, the wetlands, as we talked about, this prop- property, property runs all through the spine of the, you know, bisects the property here. So all these lots here and most of these lots here were all outside up on the view area. So really, you did not have anything to do with the commission.
Right.
Only time we had anything to do with the commission, when we did a filling for the road crossing here, you've been for that.
Large discussion on that bridge.
That big crossing you had here, that was where the only wetlands issues we had there. This lot here is the last lot, so that's all in one, and that's why we're here because of the upland, this little pocket of wetlands here and in the up on the view area, that's what, yeah.
This is the opposite view, this is upside down.
Right, well, no, well, this one is going first, this is north, this way, south is going this way, correct, yep. So this is, this is the cul-de-sac here, and here's the property in here. So that's the only reason why we're here because of this little pocket of wetlands, and this wetland is mostly downhill with the hill, so.
Got it. You're kind of throwing me off by flipping it up.
You know, it turns out, it looks like the driveway is coming out by the old road.
No, that's north-south though, correct, north-south.
North-south.
Yeah, north is correct. Right, and the cul-de-sac is over here, right here, the cul-de-sac.
Well, it sounds like the commission is otherwise to not do a full site, a regular site and review, and I'm in favor of that as well, and are we, are we feeling like we're going to accept this application for review?
Yeah, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Yes.
Right, do we want to ask for any additional materials? Do we want to discuss that now?
You should discuss that now, bottom chair.
Yeah.
I, I don't need that. Like you said, I think it's straightforward.
I'd be hard pressed to think that the wetlands would have moved that much in that period of time, and also given the direction of flow to begin with. I don't think I need anything, but I wouldn't pose the argument if somebody was heartfelt on it.
I'd be quiet. I would tend to side with Nico and say that it's been a considerable amount of time, so I would be in favor of asking for a soils report and a functions and values, just so that we can have a full body of information to review it. That's, that's me. And am I misstating your feelings on that or?
I'm fine going with the current, these, these delineations, we can confirm them in the field. I was just hoping for a functions and values assessment by a scientist, just so you know.
Well, if we have it, we'll probably have Jim McManus would be working for, for us, and you, I see he has planned right there. He can, he's a soil scientist. We have the wetlands flagged, have the wetlands flags restake, re, restake from the surveyor, he can look at it and say yay or nay or.
Give us an indication that needs more information.
Right.
I think, I would think that's the best, I like that, yeah. That makes, that would make me more comfortable, to be honest, that'd be good.
So, so I, I just wanna make sure that I can keep track of what you guys have. So, so this is gonna be a segment. And you've been, what are you asking for?
Um, flagging of the, um.
We, we.
You want, you want this to be.
Survey, surveyor, the, the flags back up, but not all of them, right?
On the, on the southern.
We'll go from flag forty one to forty nine, yeah, okay, and then this pocket.
We also get the four corners of the house.
Hey, hang on, guys, just bear with me here, I wanna make sure. No, I just wanna make sure I understand. So forty one.
Forty nine.
Okay, forty nine. Would you also want?
That little pocket too, right?
Right, definitely, yeah.
So, so that would be wetland, that's looking like forty one eighty four, forty one eighty five, eighty one eighty, or, excuse me, forty one eighty four. Um. Yeah, you know what? Let me just put it up on the screen. That's, that's a good idea, thank you.
Just the pocket, David.
Yeah, you know.
Yeah.
The pocket. So we'll do this pocket right here then. We'll do this pocket.
Yep.
Forty one to forty nine.
Perfect.
Okay, and then, and then that's in that little intermittent water course that goes down there.
Actually, do we want the corners of the house? Do we want?
Well, yeah, you will have to do that, and we'll, and we'll do the drainage as well.
Thank you.
Right.
Can you do that and that? And then is there some way that you can show us in the field how close the, the limit of disturbance and the grading there is that's closest to the the isolated wetland area?
Well, we get that flag number here, we can just scale up the plan and say, boom, that's how far it is.
Okay, we can do that in the field. Okay, yeah, just to give us an idea of where.
If you go to look at it, you can stand at it and look.
Where the end of like, like the corner of like the grading of the you know, the wall, the retaining walls, like how far off the driveways can go? Um, I think the prevalent, what else? The septics?
Well.
The septic is well outside of, the one hundred foot off the view area, as is in fact the humps.
Yeah, so just something to give us a reference in the field, including, it seems like the retain where the, where the end of limited disturbance. Of the.
I mean, like. I'm asking for the house because I think it helps us to place ourselves in the space so that we can have
Right, right.
An understanding of how the property is, but the, the septic is not.
But like, I wanna see and know how close the grading is, the limit that disturbance up to, but that's all, anything in green there with those tight lines, that's all gonna be made.
Right.
So where is that gonna end? How close to that, to that well, and, and, yeah, pretty much on.
So what, um, Mr. DeVesta is saying is that when we are in the field, we can.
They'll stand there.
Yeah, we can literally stand right there and.
And, and, and what did you ask for in terms of other, did you ask for any other reports?
That'll be determined on the sidewalk, I believe, we were talking.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were talking about having a soil scientist from his out there, Mr. McManus.
Yeah, well, well, that's, that's, I will talk, I'll talk to my client about who we are hiring, but I mean, Jim, Jim will be most likely one we'll recommend, but we'll do a value and function valuation like you're saying, and he'll be able to say the weapons are what Roy, Roy Shook did back in twenty two thousand is, is applicable to what today.
Yeah.
He may say it's, it's, there's nothing there, but we don't know yet, we'll be up after second.
I would advise the commissioner, make a motion.
We're formally accepted as a more than function.
By a site.
We want to do it with this.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it is.
I'm saying that I would and.
Well, let's, 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 let's discuss that, let's figure out. Do you want to function evaluate, evaluate function of the, of the weapons?
No, I would, no.
I do.
I'm still in two minutes.
That does present a two and two. I don't know what happens when we have a two and two.
Can we wait till, till we are out there and see or this?
That's probably the best idea, yeah.
Is that? Sometimes we run into.
I mean, if you guys are super heartfelt on it.
Well, it's tricky, because they wanna start in March.
No, we don't, no.
I thought it said March twenty fifth.
Well, we, that's just throw, throw date out there, but we're not, we're not gonna do right away.
So it would be better if we could see this, the site in spring.
You don't want to start in March, do you?
No.
You want, you want to start in March?
No.
Like, Jim would have to wait until the spring to do the.
Well, not until snow is gone.
Do we have, do we have the time if we do a sidewalk to be able to request this after the sidewalk?
I, I don't wanna speak for the availability of soil.
But also, I'm also a surveyor too, we have to figure out the survey to get out there, so I don't know how busy they are.
No, I'm talking when we go out to do the sidewalk. Do we have time to, if we determine at that point we need a.
Functions and values.
Thank you. Can it be done at that time? Or do we run out of the ninety, sixty?
So, so, if you guys are looking to do a site plan, if you guys are looking to review this by your site plan review process, you have sixty five days to review your application. That's, that's your nominal period, and you have up to sixty five days of extension time that will be granted by the applicant. Obviously, if they need more time to give that information that you guys are requesting, they will extend the application, that you have the time to do that.
I'm, I'm okay, I'm okay with doing that after the sidewalk, everybody's all right with that, except I don't wanna make you incur costs that's not necessary as well, you know what I mean by?
Thank you.
I don't know. Is it prohibitively expensive to ask for that one report?
I, I don't think that's the thing. I don't think we should even ask that, what's the cost?
No, I think I, uh, we'll, we'll, we're, we're going out, flag, putting the flag back up again. You do your sidewalk, make it a value, make it a determination at that time, then we'll, we'll, we'll see what we can do, get a soil scientist out there or our, our mentalist to, to give us a value, a function of value of the wetlands. Is that fair enough?
Yeah, it sounds very. How soon do you want to schedule that sidewalk?
Have you checked the weather for the long range?
Well, I could, but it could change tomorrow, so far be it for me to know how good the sidewalk is. I, I, I really.
Of course, so I'm in favor, um, and everyone.
How long would you need to flex? We don't know yet. Okay, I'll get, I'll call this server tomorrow. So.
But we probably need to determine that tonight, so do we not, we need to schedule?
I, what, what I would suggest is right now, I, I, I think the, the biggest variable is your availability, at least that's the one that we know we can control. If for some reason, the surveyor or whoever else needs to go out there isn't available in time, we can always have a rain date set up for, for this commission to fall back on in the instance that that original day doesn't work. Of course, you also have snow and whatever else, unforeseen circumstances.
February twenty second.
February twenty seconds.
That is two days before our next meeting.
I know. Oh, it's two days? I think, I thought it was a Saturday.
It is a Saturday.
It's Saturday, which is two days before our next.
Because we meet on Mondays.
I just don't win the fourteenth. It is the longest time you hope the snow is gone by then.
I, I understand, does that feel like I've put you in the squeeze or?
We'll, we'll ask. I cannot let they know, let you finish your, whatever.
February twenty second. All right, I am going to access my technology for the purposes of checking the schedule.
I accept.
You want it?
I'm pretty sure I'm free. I'm gonna say I'm free.
I just know the fourteenth is a Friday.
Yeah, no, I, I would be right there with you, I would say.
Is it?
Like, not tomorrow, but you're not checking.
Second, I am checking.
So you'll be of no use if I'm.
Yeah, I, I will say I will also be unavailable for the fifteen.
Twenty seconds, that's.
I can, I can do the twenty second, you can do the twenty second, you are checking, you can propose it, so.
I'm pretty positive I can. If, if that changes, I will let you know. I gotta check with work stuff, and I don't have my work schedule here, and I don't have my.
Nico's gonna check the month.
So while Nico is.
You're not available. There you are.
For the twenty second?
Yes.
Yes, I am.
Couldn't feel good.
And you love coming up on Saturdays to do sidewalks.
You know, I'm, I'm at the service of the board. I don't know how far.
We could do this twenty first at night, but then it's dark around like forty five.
I am not going out on a Friday afterward.
Okay.
Okay, what time?
Madam Chair.
I don't have a light, I just.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
What, what, what time would the, would, uh?
I'm comparing with Nico because he has to work that day, so we're just gonna look to see.
I apologize.
No, that's correct.
Uh, President's Day is the seventeenth.
Okay, that's better, yes.
So.
Oh, shit.
I.
Monday.
Will. Try to get off that.
We could adjust it a different day when you're off, you shouldn't have to adjust.
Don't take out work. What are you, what are, what are your work hours?
I work two sixteen a lot, um, when, on the weekends.
Also, every weekend you're.
Weekends and holidays, but.
What about on a?
That's possible, the weekday night.
It can start pretty early. I don't know, well, I am, because there's spiders, but the I will put it out there that I can also be available on Thursday mornings or weekday sometimes. No, Pat says no.
I, I, I'm not sure, I.
I can't commit to that without checking work schedules.
Understood, okay.
Yeah.
I shouldn't be able to, but.
Aren't you gonna be retired?
I will find out tomorrow.
And you don't have a social life, we already established that, so, don't mess with us, man.
I'm supposed to be retired, they asked me to stay long.
We want you back here too.
We use Saturday the fifteenth.
That's President's Day weekend.
Oh.
David has a three day weekend, don't do that to him.
Yeah, I'll be out of town.
Thank you, Nico. I try not to ask for too much.
Uh, four o'clock in a weekday, it's still light out because it gets light at five, uh, eighteen right now, dark.
That is, that is all true.
It was five oh three P M was the end of legal daylight, Sunday. Okay, guys, watch that like, I just nobody looking.
I can also say that for whoever is unavailable to make it, as long as there are three persons available, you have a quorum. And I can make a point to the video and audio recording while we're on the sidewalk. I don't know if that's as good as being out there, but it at least is some kind of consolation if you can't be.
So if you guys wanna schedule it on a weeknight, that's fine, I probably won't be able to be there, but if everybody else can, that's fine.
We do it on the Friday.
Why do you start on Friday?
That Friday right before, the twenty first.
Friday, Fridays are very minimal to my schedule.
Does that work for, for you guys?
Yeah, I can do it.
Oh, okay, we do it on Friday.
I'm a solid maybe, but I don't think you need me as much, because I'm okay with following up afterwards.
I definitely will.
David, you have something Friday twenty, on the Friday the twenty first.
Oh, I.
You have one?
We have that, we have, that's.
Oh.
So you can't do it right after work on Friday.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Nice.
You, you might be able to do it later that Friday, but I don't know what time.
We don't wanna be out there at night.
Gotta keep in mind, Tom employees get off at twelve or Friday.
We, we do, so. But that, but that is a good point. Thank you, I apologize.
Please.
Let's see.
Yeah.
So.
Nobody do it Friday morning.
I, I cannot, but you guys can.
I, I won't know.
I'll be at work from eight thirty until six thirty, so.
Okay, I'll, um, if it, if it only can work for the Saturday.
So you do it in half, only, it's, it's only an hour walk.
Is.
You only have, you only have the mohawk after that.
Is there, is there a rain day that the commission?
What time do you, what time do you have to be at Mohawk?
The shift starts at eight.
Oh.
Get there at ten?
But I'll get there for. One, two.
All right, so we wanna do it as early as possible then on Saturday?
Nine, or.
Eight.
Six thirty.
I could go snowboard for you.
Six thirty, are you?
No, it's nine.
Nine o'clock.
An hour sidewalk, that's not.
Okay, that, that is fine for me.
Do we wanna schedule a rain day too?
I think we have a lot of trouble figuring this.
At nine o'clock.
At nine o'clock. Twenty-second, nine o'clock.
That's, that's the tentative that, that we got.
That's two days before our meeting, so if we were gonna try to schedule a rain date, it would be earlier. And earlier wouldn't work.
Right, I mean, it, it would be beneficial to have your sidewalk beforehand, but it doesn't mean you have to.
But we could redress, we could talk about that at our meeting on Monday, which will be the twenty.
Fourth.
Right.
Sure, that's fair.
If it didn't work out for someone, we can schedule a new date.
That's fair.
Cause I think we're all.
Sure.
We've done sidewalks in the rain before, so.
Okay.
I'm ready.
Done.
Okay, so twenty-second at nine A M, 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 sir. Twenty-second at nine A M.
You should have, you should have two motions, one to accept the application, the other one to schedule the sidewalk.
Correct, so I will entertain a motion to accept the application for cycling review.
I love it when Pat makes the motions.
I didn't make the motion. No moves.
Second.
Do I need to name the application?
You should.
Forty-seven star lane. Pat made the motion, correct? I don't know who made the motion.
Someone said.
Moved, moved by Nico, seconded by Pat. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, so moved. And I will entertain a motion to plan our sidewalk of forty-seven star. Road, sorry, or lane, thank you, for February twenty-second at nine A M.
I would like to make the motion for a sidewalk at forty-seven star lane, Saturday, February twenty-second, nine A M.
I, I didn't, I'm your second again. I'm sorry, I shouldn't ask to be on any discussion? Thank you, okay. Aye.
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 Hey.
Okay.
Park on the cul-de-sac and we'll walk down driveway.
Is the driveway in?
The driveway to forty-nine is in.
Gotcha.
Oh, the shared driveway.
The shared. But it's not, not parking down, once you get past this curve right here, park everybody, so park in the cul-de-sac and walk down.
Okay. You'll have a shuttle bus for us?
Yes, we will. Nothing.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good party.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have forty-one Dodging Town Road. Discuss potential regulated activity along or within East Swamp Brook. And Dave, did you want to bring us up to speed on that?
I, I can, but the property owner is here, so I would give them. Write a first refusal if they wanted to offer any comments.
If you could just say your name and address for the.
My name's Bruce Pierce, forty-one Dodging Town Road. It's, uh, Route three oh two, which is the main, main, uh, highway.
I'm bringing it up on the screen right now.
So the story is, is there's a retaining wall that adjoins, uh, uh, the brook there, and it's also. Part of the bridge area that goes underneath the Route three oh two. It's, it's the brook. And, um.
Is this between Shelley and Old Hollyville?
It's be, it's, it is, um, it's right across from Eastbrook Court.
Okay. Got it.
They need a purple house. Green house, whatever, great.
Yep, I know where Eastbrook Court, East Hook and Court.
I do not. I'm sorry.
So this is the traffic light up here.
Oh, I got it.
If you're going down the hill, west towards or east towards Newtown, excuse me. Uh, the subject's property is at the bottom of the hill that crossed the street from Eastbrook Court.
Oh, you have the tin bar?
Yes.
Got it.
Okay.
And the western slum.
That's right.
You have some nice woods there.
Okay, thank you for situating. Yep. So about, um, about fifteen years ago, I had part of the, the, the wall collapsed. So I went in there and I fixed the wall because it's, you know, what I do, I, I fix things that are broken. So, um, that, that, that flagged me out, told me I can't do it, I gotta get a permit. I finished what I was doing and I wanted to finish the other side because it's eroding, it's, it's undermining. Um, it's gonna collapse. So. Make a long story short, I never got back to finishing it, even though I got, had a permit to do it. I just didn't get back to doing it.
When was that permit issued, sir?
Fifteen years ago. So. The storm came in, that, that.
Yep.
Was all havoc. And, I mean, it washed so much out, it's unbelievable. I think they took pictures of it.
I sure did. I could bring them up on the screen if the commission.
So if I don't do anything about it now, it's gonna collapse and it's in our problems. The problem is, is I called the state about it. The state said, yes, we can take care of that, no problem. Well, two months later, they didn't do nothing. I kept calling. They said, no, it's not our problem. Then, then they said, call Torrington Bridge, which takes care of all the bridges in the area, I guess. They're, they're the ones that are in charge of it. I talked to him and he says, yeah, that's, that's, that's exactly what we do. We, I know with the bridge. We should be able to take care of it, no problem. Well, two months later. They said, no, it's too far away from the bridge to be our problem. So now it's on me again. I just want it, I don't want it to collapse. I mean, the, this area here is what I had replaced. Um, fifteen years ago. I, I poured all this cement and believe it or not, it's, it's undermined again. I mean, this is how much I put in and it's, it's undermined again. So anyhow, so this area has to be repaired. This area here is where the, the road is. This is all undermined and, and even up farther is undermined quite a bit. So I, if you go by my house, I have a whole pile of rock. I have, I have, um, mafia blocks. They're just blocks as concrete. And I was gonna set here, the mafia blocks, I was gonna set here to build this up. You know, to, to about this height, which here is, is two feet tall, maybe two and a half feet. To get across here. And I was gonna build, I was gonna put the mafia blocks as a wall. To build that elevation up to, to stop it from eroding from underneath the wall. So the wall has some foundation under it. Are you creating a pool then? Create a pool? Like a dam if you're going across with a two-foot-high wall? It, well, it's not, it's gonna be, it's gonna be stone. It's not gonna be, it's not gonna be a concrete wall. It's gonna be porous. Oh, so you're thinking water's gonna. Water will go through. And if we, we get a heavy rain, yeah, it'll go, you know, it, it will eventually go over. Correct. So, um. That's where I'm at. I mean, you could tell how, how close we are to the, to the, to the road. You know, up here, it's, it's not that far at all. And I can't believe that Torrington Bridge. Says it has, they don't have anything to. So are you? So you're just planning a. Perpendicular to what you did. That's the only work you're planning on doing? Yeah, well, here, yes, I wanna, I wanna fill this in underneath. You know, put some, uh, rock here, fill in underneath this wall and, and actually there's a little bit more. Uh, farther up. Towards the bridge. But yeah, just, you know, just get some rock in there to, to stop it from eroding so much.
Is that on your private property now? Is that why nobody's really willing or able to take care of it?
Well.
Like town-wise, like is this partially town?
One of the concerns I have is if you do that work, especially on near the road there. Ten years from now, something happens, they come back and say you caused it by doing it. I only can make it better. I can't make. I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just saying. They're quick to be able to, like, well, it's our fault or it was this guy's fault.
I'm not opposed to fixing anything. I just feel shitty that you got to take.
Yeah, no. Building up for yourself.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, even with on this side. On that side, I'm a little nervous. I call them again. I, I actually been calling for another week and a half. David, is there anything that Tom can do to call the state and say, you need to look at this?
So.
And make it to determine if there's an error.
I, I apologize because I haven't had the time to do my due diligence to look into what records may exist. Here in the clerk's office that may speak to these walls that line this section of East Swamp Brook. I, off the cuff, am I aware of any maintenance agreements and or easements? Where the state would be beholden for maintenance? No. That doesn't mean they don't exist. I don't know how far down the condot rabbit hole one would have to go. To find those kinds of documents. As someone who hasn't had firsthand experience with this yet myself. It could be very simple. If I know who to ask, it could be very complicated. But doesn't mean. That I wouldn't want to undertake that work, but I want to be smart about it.
No, no, absolutely. My, just my concern is, again, you work on your side of the property. Okay. But open yourself up to being that close to the street. God forbid, ten years from now, the major storm comes. Washes out that road. Guess what the state's gonna do? Right.
Like, I couldn't care less about you being.
Further down this brook, I mean, it, it washed hundreds of, of, of yardage of material away. I mean, trees are falling like left and right.
I actually would like to pause for a second if I can. Um, first of all, I want to say what a terrible situation. I have a lot of empathy and I know that a lot of people were really hit hard and clearly. And how incredibly frustrating it must be, I'm sure, and expense and all of that. So you have my, my sympathy and my empathy for all of that. Genuinely. And I, I appreciate that you want to fix the problem and I think we all would love to have you be able to fix the problem. Um, that on the table to begin with, I have some concerns about having someone, a private citizen, do this work. If we recall back to another situation that we've been dealing with at another property for quite some time now. Where that property owner did not engage the services of an engineer. Um, I don't want to get too far into it because it's not really something that's a part of this discussion, but I want to bring that back to mind.
That is also pending litigation.
Right, so I'll just step away. But I, but, but that is all my.
With any shit because you're trying to do the right thing.
Yeah, like.
Right.
But I'm a, I'm a type of guy that, you know what, I, I don't need anybody. I can do it all myself. And it'll be a lot better than not doing it at all, that's for sure.
I appreciate your passion for wanting to maintain your property and, and make sure that.
Yeah, well, that's, that's why I did it in the beginning.
Right. So that's, that's, that's what I'm gonna bring into the conversation is that I have some concerns with not having this, this structurally. Assessed by a professional engineer to make sure that it's done properly.
But he has the full permit to do this and then.
May.
Would, would that be necessary?
So, this, this activity would be a regulated, regulated activity. Mr. Pierce is proposing to. Within the banks of and within the channel itself of a water course. That's also defined as a core activity in the regulation where you may also want to question significant impacts. The last element that you may also want to consider within what's called a regulatory floodbight. And that, not to bring up that other property again, but that was another item of concern where this is. Obviously, as Mr. Pierce's experience, in an area that has a potential to flood. If you're gonna be doing any activity in this area, you have to design it in such a way that it's not going to adversely impact. The flood storage capacity of that area of the property without having some accountability for that.
And I recognize that that would never be your intent is to make the situation worse.
Well, the, the thing is, is I own. The, the, if you pull up by the. You're farther down. All the way down. It's, it's six hundred feet farther I own.
But it does continue beyond your property, extend above your property. The larger picture, but I, I recognize that your intentions are good. Yeah, would you just say your name?
Yeah, Steve, Steve Duchelle, uh, Saxon Road, Buffalo, Connecticut. I don't think Bruce conveyed, he, he owns a construction business. He does this stuff all day long, every day of the week. Uh, so that really needs to be put on the record as well.
I have a question.
Thank you, Mr. DeMar.
Do you, do you feel like this is within your scope and capabilities? Do you want to take this project on?
Well, I don't, I, I will take it on because everybody says yes, yes, and then no, no.
Cause you have.
Because I have.
Is it how critical? I haven't seen.
It's critical, right, so.
How critical a piece of infrastructure is?
It's critical, yeah.
It's critical.
If, well, I mean, this.
On your side, that's your side.
This section of wall that I replaced already, I mean, if you're talking money, it cost me twenty thousand dollars to do it. It's, it's, it's gonna cave back down and my yard's gonna cave in there. It's just something that.
So you're right there.
To do it, you know? And it's foolish not to. That's all. It's just foolish not to do it.
Is it too narrow, you think, the river to hold the, want to flow? Like when you observe?
I've been here thirty-five years and it's, this is the second time that it's, that it's did this.
So maybe too narrow to hold the.
It's not too narrow. I don't, because it never overflowed.
Oh, it's just you're, it's choosing to go underneath.
Yeah, well, it, it.
So that this, this may not be reaching the retaining wall because it is finding ways to. Go through that area without having to go over the banks by going under the retaining wall itself.
Again, speaks to my concerns about wanting to make sure that this is done in a way that's gonna preserve the integrity.
Can I go through the rest of the photographs? So this is, this is the furthest view I took. Up here, obviously, is three oh two. This is Mr. Pierce's property. If, if I were to be, I, when I was standing down here to take this photograph. I, if, if my head was able to go over the top of this retaining wall, I, I would have been surprised. Um, this is just another view. Um, I'll zoom in here, uh, so you can kind of get, this is, this might be a slightly better angle.
Yeah.
This, this has to be at least a foot, if not two feet in, you know, of, of, of. Of material that's been undermined here. And if, if you had the, if I could have gotten the same vantage point. Of this section of retaining wall, it's about the same.
Right.
Um. This is kind of an overhead view. This is Route three oh two right here, uh, crossing East Swamp Brook. You, you, you can kind of see how the most recent, uh, rain event. Uh, had the effect of channelizing the water towards this side of the retaining wall here. Um, it, it, one would wonder if this section of lock wasn't here. How the water would navigate and whether it would be more inclined to. Go towards the edge of the retaining wall as it is now, or stay more towards the middle of the channel. Um, this is the last shot. This is kind of just showing underneath. Um, it narrows, I would say, from, uh, the opposite side of, of three oh two. This, this kind, this, it's, it's a really long game. Uh, it's like the bell of a brass instrument, really, where it's, it's a, it's a long tube. That slightly flares as it goes towards, um, the outlet side.
The, the corner of the picture to the right.
This here, you know?
No, go farther.
Where?
Go towards your, stop moving, go towards your right.
Yep.
Go down. Is that, like, how far is that from the street? Like, I pictured this next. You know what, to me, this looks like something that. You know what, we're getting bigger and bigger storms. I don't care who wants to say you don't. You're getting bigger and bigger storms. You got one storm away from this wall falling down. And three oh two caving in. And then there's gonna be finger pointing left and right. So I would, my recommendation would be. Let someone from the town at least call the state. I, I don't know, you may get one phone call and that's it. But at least maybe we could try to have someone from a state engineer come down to look at it and say. No, not us, because then they're on record as saying not us.
Yeah, so this is, so this is where, I think it's where it's clarifying where the property line roughly is. And there's a survey map that I had as part of the, um. The drive contents for this year that I think can shed some insight on that.
Something's gotta give. If it, if it erodes closer to, to three oh two, that fat wall goes, that'll move the road. If it goes, it chooses your side.
My, my, my thing is, even if, even if the property line is away. This gentleman still needs someone from the state that can look at the plans and say, yes, this is not gonna affect here.
Right.
To get him away from the law.
But this is a long-term.
I'm, yeah, yeah, I'm very okay with him doing the work. I just want to make sure he's not doing it at his own peril.
I'm not very okay with.
Well, yeah, doing it correctly. He would have. Like, go, go through that, do the route to do it properly, but I'm not against him doing that, but the fact of the matter is I just don't want him to go. Through the route of doing it properly without having negative impact on him from that perspective.
Right. So, so if you look up on the screen, this was, uh, a, a. A hypothetical subdivision map that an engineer had prepared for Mr. Pierce. Ten, twelve, somewhere in that ballpark years ago. The, the reason why I have on the screen now is because it fortunately shows. Roughly where the water course is today, which is where my. Roughly where the water course is today, which is where my cursor is, I know it's it's hard to see. Uh, oh, shoot.
Are we in the top left, the dotted line?
Yeah, yeah, but you know what, I'll just, I'll hop to the screen myself.
So trying to show us where the culvert is.
Yes, so. The road, the the curve of the road is this dash line right here, so so the road crossing is, I don't know how many feet that is. But that's not on Mr. Pierce's property, the 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 majority of the retaining wall that I showed in the photos, however, is. This is where the water course flows right here, if you roughly follow my finger, it goes, it follows the, the direction of flow follows this arrow this way. Okay, a- and and the property line, if it's, if it's more than ten feet away. From the edge of the curve of three O two, I I would be surprised. So it there's I, there's no question that both retaining walls. From a short distance of where three O two crosses over East Swamp Brook are on Mr. Pierce's property. I I don't see any, I I, this is, and this is where I have to do due diligence to see if there are any maintenance agreements or easements. Where the state would have some input or responsibility for the upkeep of these walls. If there is, I would certainly share that with you, I just didn't have the time to do that before this meeting, of course, I would share this with you too, Mr. Pierce. Um, that notwithstanding, if there are no agreements, that any maintenance. Or any activities that occur within this area here, they are solely at Mr. Pierce's.
And perfect, I, yeah, I understand that, yes.
That doesn't mean that he has free will to do it.
Right, it means he has to go through the process to do so.
But what what I think what what I'm saying then first, check with the state. Okay, if you, like, if you're finding they're responsible or not responsible, if they're not responsible, the gentleman needs to get an engineer. And someone from, someone that you can find from the state to be able to say, work together, to be able to say, yeah, we approved this plan.
Well, the the state, the state's MO.
Oh, yeah.
Unless, i- and that they are, the state is only one, is going, is only going to want to be beholden to what. It's beholden to and write it.
Okay.
So if there isn't anything that's memorialized, that goes beyond where three O two crosses East Swamp Brook itself, they're not gonna want to have anything to do with it.
Okay.
They're gonna say, that's all, Mr. Pierce, he can do whatever he, well, he can do whatever. You know, and then and gets permits for, uh, on his property, we we don't have any comment that we want to argue.
Okay.
So I I, I don't know how that would work for for the, uh. But that's where I have to confirm, so, um. Again, it it, uh, half, half of the battle is, I I I, if I'm gauging the commission correctly. I think you want to be able to allow Mr. Pierce to repair. And maintain his property and preserve its use and the retaining walls. But that being said, you also want to make sure that it's done correctly and that it's done safely. So if you have any feedback from Mr. Pierce on how he should do that, you may want to give that to him here now.
Well, I think that you will do what you need to in order to try and.
Well, I'll tell you right now, I'm not being an engineer to engineer some stones in a, in a, in a waterway, I I won't do that.
I'm wondering if it's not the state you should, depending on the history of this, whether it was part of the year or not. When, do you know when it was first built?
Oh, forever ago.
Forever, where?
Prior to you, right?
Yeah. It's that.
Was it a part of the construction, was that, did it, was that part of the construction when they built the culvert under three O two?
Probably when they did, uh, uh, three, yeah, probably. Eastbrook Court in. Uh, is probably when those walls were were built, and I don't know how far back that goes, David.
The the subdivision for Eastbrook Court dates back to the mid seventies.
Yeah.
I looked through that subdivision plan and there isn't anything to reflect that there was work done.
Under three.
On the opposite side of, on Mr. Pierce's side of three O two, that was part of that subdivision.
My recommendation would be, see what, if you could see, do your due diligence.
Of course, yeah.
If the state's not responsible, I would, I can't approve it without a engineer plan. I know you know I how to do it, that I'm not questioning that, I mean, I feel frustration there.
The frustration is, I'd rather put rock in there to hold back stuff. I don't know how you could engineer some some rocks that you could throw in there and and say it's engineered, don't, that don't make no sense to me.
Totally understand why you're questioning that.
No sense to me. I'd rather Band-Aid the problem that that we have than not do anything.
Right.
I totally understand.
I want to help you with in the short term, because like, it sounds like you're concerned about the wall that you built and put money to collapse imminently. So I'm prepared to, on our end, personally, say that you wouldn't do your suggestions of putting the mafia blocks underneath.
Yeah.
Nico, that's gonna be impeding the waterway.
Yeah, but I'm for that, in this case, as soon as possible.
But that's a regulated activity.
That's all we have to say yes or no about, I would say yes, to do that as soon as possible, whatever you need to do to save your wall, in the short term. While in the long term, we need to know if this thing is actually gonna. Because that may not stop the erosion, if it's not wide enough to carry.
Well, right now, it's it's down to.
It'll save your wall, but the erosion could keep going, right?
The erosion is down to, uh, ledge, so it's not going any deeper anymore.
It's not eating the lawn or the ground, the top sort of underneath.
The 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 water that's running is not going any deeper because it's at ledge. So if I could build off of that ledge, then then we have a good foundation.
Can we go see it with you? Because it sounds, yeah, I would, I would have him fix, just to do what is necessary in the short term to fix.
I think you guys have a double standard.
Yeah.
You're setting a double standard. You can't have, so let me, let me throw one more thing out there, yeah.
Change the course of the water, we've already had other applications, not applications, situations before us. Where this was done without coming before the.
Right, but that's the problem, so he's coming to us, it's up to us to decide whether we say yes or no.
And on the basis of all the conversations that we've had before, this this is a regulated activity that's happening within water.
This isn't so much a yes or no conversation as much as it is, uh, gaining context. Of of the situation, so you can give Mr. Pierce guidance for what he should submit. And why he needs to submit.
I view this as a routine case of resident, um.
I know.
Maintenance of residential property.
Use of right of use, but it's not, because it falls under the regulations that we discussed ad nauseam. When we were discussing other properties, this is a regulated activity.
So. So, let's, let's clarify, now I clarify that.
I think Mr. Bjorkin has that right as well, he just didn't exercise.
So, we're not gonna.
So this is, this is.
We can't discuss other.
So this is, this is, this is the uses, this is the uses permitted as of. Okay. Um. Uses permitted as of rights. Following the operations and uses shall be created in wetlands and watercourses and upper superior areas as of right. Farming operations, residential home, residential accessory uses. But such incidental use shall include maintenance of existing structures and landscaping, but shall not. Include removal or deposition of significant amounts of material. From or onto a wetland or watercourse for diversion or alteration of the watercourse. Residential drainage pipe maintenance, fire emergencies, boat and bridge, water companies and DEEP activities.
So what is an operation to water?
That's, that's how the regulation.
Material in which falls within regulations, which is why we would require a permit for it, which doesn't necessarily mean that he can't undergo. It just means that it has to go through the review. The right abuse, excuse me, I never say that right.
Okay, right.
I would start A, definitely, do whatever we say, because if we can lend a hand, we should, meaning like. There's any way in the world that this could fall on the state, which I know is like a one in a thousand chance, but.
Yeah, yeah, of course. I I will definitely exhaust that to the nth degree.
Yeah.
Because I I, because I I think it's worth it for the board's education, staff's understanding. And if there's any benefit that can be provided to Mr. Pierce, of course, because.
Absolutely.
Yeah, he he should, that that should be exhausted for him as a resource before any other direction is made. But that that being said, you have, if, right, if that does get exhausted and the state isn't willing to intervene. Or take on that work, you know, to to do that repair work, you you need to have some kind of. Uh, direction as to how to remediate the situation.
Right, and so, by my understanding, that would require a permit to be brought before us or a request. For us to review, and I understand that that's cumbersome and I understand that you're anxious to get moving on this.
Well, yeah.
I I understand, I understand, and like I said, I, I empathize with your situation. Um, it extends beyond just your property, but how we, how we function as a commission that found and regulated all of, all of our other. Properties that fall under our guidance, so, um, did you apply to FEMA?
No. No, but I I did, I did find out that if, after the storm, if I did do the work. I wouldn't even have to be here, I would have just did it, because they gave you.
They give you a leniency. Was ninety days?
Just to fix your problem before fixing, you know, and instead he went to the store. Instead he went to the the town and the state and the bridge company, but but he had the the go ahead. Right after the storm to fix it. And do it because he wanted to go through.
I'm not aware of that.
Not neither was I.
State of emergency.
Is it too late?
I'm not sure if the weather closed on getting money from FEMA, but.
And that wasn't, that wasn't even, that wasn't even money. Right, and we we have a fix, a lot of friends that are contractors that did nothing but. Fix washouts and driveways and watercourses.
Without having to get permitted.
Months, no permits, just fix it. And it was just, yeah, so you tried to do it the right way. And you end up. Well, that's right.
Anyway, that's, I've said my case, but I'm not the, I don't speak.
I agree with you.
When it comes to decisions, I have to recuse myself because I'm personally vested in the situation, so, but I can. Discuss, offer input and assistance and give any help where I can, but I can't, I can't be part of the decision-making committee.
Do you have more, did you have more you wish to offer to the discussion?
Not particularly, like, it's, it's just a shit situation, I, the the only main concern I have for for. For, because I'm personally vetted, I just don't want anyone to do something that's gonna come and bite you in the ass afterwards, even if it's on your own personal property. Including the state, like, I don't want the state to come back and bite you in the ass, I don't want the town to come back and bite you in the ass, I don't want anybody to. Uh, I, it's enough stress to deal with what you're dealing with, so the last thing I want is just headache.
I agree, I think we're probably, we're all on that page, we're not looking to question more harm. Did you have more you wanted to add to that discussion?
Um, just that, I guess I'm curious maybe if, if the construction was before some of these issuance, like, um, I don't know what you call these dates of before April first nineteen seventy four. Before basically these regulations set.
Because you're doing the work now.
Yeah.
Like, some things that are permitted permitted before April first nineteen seventy four are permitted as well. You know what I'm saying, because it was grandfathered.
Now, the works being done.
This was if it was permitted and it was a structural.
That's, that's.
Wondering if there, if we.
That's for the construction of, that only, that date only applies to the construction of a, of a dwelling. On a subdivision that was established as of April first nineteen seventy four.
Not the works associated with it, like, maybe landscaping and culverts and drainage.
No, lan- landscaping is explicitly addressed in residential accessory uses. This the subsection beneath or immediately following that.
What are you trying to get to work on, what do you want to start, on the winter and spring? Is that like an A seven thing, or is it like, or is it springtime?
When, when it's completely.
When, when. As soon as possible, I mean, I'm ready.
Well, can I make the recommendation that, like, let's say that we can't find leeway through days to get things. Moving either at state or town level.
Uh, can we? I I will tell you that the the town would not be in any position to do this.
Yeah, I I just. Give guidance to what the next step would be so he could be proactive, like, if he wants to be proactive, yeah.
That's the whole.
So, yeah, so, again, I'm speaking for myself and you all have to chime in on what your thoughts are, but. My guidance would be, at this point, to to seek out all of the, and and data that he's available to help you with that, that was my understanding. To see if if there's anything that can be done at the state level to support this, um, but if that fails, then. My understanding of our regulations is that we would ask you to bring, um, a proposal for us.
What kind of application?
Yeah, I'm sorry, wrong word, application, yeah, to do the work.
Okay, so.
Can you straighten?
He's asking what would be that.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, is it gonna cost, is it gonna be engineering involved? No, I'm not, I'm not interested, I'm not interested in doing that.
That changes the twenty thousand dollar repair into seventy thousand dollar.
Exactly, I I'd rather throw some rock in there, get your penalty, your fine and and call it a day, like. You know, like the wall I did, I I did it without your permission and it's been fine, it's been perfect. I didn't, I didn't cause no trouble, so that's, that's where we're at.
I. I understand.
I I understand where you're coming from, and it's not, I I'm not questioning quality or your work.
It isn't the quality of work, it's the rock, we're talking some rock, I mean, it's, if you don't want me to use the mafia block, block. Okay, I won't use the mafia.
I don't know, I, my thing is, I don't know anything.
Obviously, I I mean.
Right, that's why.
It's so simple, it's rock.
That's why we need engineer, that's all.
I think you're, for, I think the cart is being put before the horse. If we're throwing out cost estimates, which 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 the commission really shouldn't even be thinking about at this.
Yeah, but when you're throwing.
Please let me finish, Mr. Pierce.
Then, then, then it's a cost thing.
Please let me finish, I I understand, but. Regardless of what the cost would be. If Mr. Pierce was to commence doing this work, yeah, I I I will go through the exact motions that he was described. I would issue him a cease and desist or an order to correct, he would come back here and essentially say. I I I'm, I I'm looking to repair my property, I put in this rock and I want to keep it there. But if the commission says that rock can't be kept there without having a permit, then. We're at the same impasse we're at right now, which is, the rock is there. It wasn't put there without a permit, and the commission needs to know that. You know, e- everything that they needed to look at to render a decision was done before that rock was put there. Um, if if I could give my insight on the situation. Um, if maintenance of this area, of this area of property is so suspect from. Um, severe storms as the one that we had this past August. Or the one that we had last January for that matter, because those were both. I think the one that we just have was one in one thousand, and the one that we had, uh, this past, or the January before. Was at least a one in one hundred, if not a one in two hundred storm, okay? Uh, you want to make sure that this is being done the right way, and no one's questioning your ability to place rock. And your knowledge of the trades and how you do things, but it it's it's one thing. To be able to place the rock where it's supposed to go, it's another thing to have. Somebody that's going to say in writing, that has some kind of certification after the name that says. I trust Mr. Pierce, do this work, I trust that what he wants to do is going to stay. The way that Mr. Pierce is putting it, and so that way, come whenever that next storm happens, because. That could happen next year, it could happen tomorrow, but you know that rock, or whatever improvements Mr. Pierce makes. Are going to withstand that event, okay? That's, that's really what you are going to want to consider.
So you all agree with that? So you all agree with that? You all agree with what he just said? So, so doing nothing is okay. And just letting it cave in and just letting it go versus, no, I'm just asking a question. Versus putting some rock in there and maybe we won't have a storm for the next thirty years. And that rock will still be in the same place I put it in. And everything's happy, my s- my wall's there, my grass is there, the the three oh two is there. Everything's okay, thirty years from now, it could be, you can't say it can't be. But you're okay with doing nothing.
None of us are saying that we're okay.
Well, um, you have to choose, it's doing nothing or or. Or hiring somebody to do it, which I'm not gonna, and I'm gonna be there for the next thirty years. So that's your choice.
Can he put a proposal together and? Is it, we have a consultant sign off on it, is that something that we can do? Town engineer just sign off on it? Yeah, yeah, who says that it has to be some sort of like.
We don't wanna hire, we've run into this before.
Right, you guys would tell me if I said that, you'd say you're setting precedent. But I also was asking, was wondering the same thing.
Yeah, thi- this this is an issue that faces all land use boards, right? Ha- ha- having a public agency, i.e. the town, doing work on private property. Um, in the instance where there's a maintenance agreement or an easement. That says the town is beholden for maintenance or repair or what have you, absolutely. The town has an obligation to go in there and do the work. Without having the benefit of the knowledge that such an agreement exists. At this point, we can only assume that there isn't anything that says that that speaks to that. And this is where I have to, as I will say again. I need to go through, pour through every single document that relates to Mr. Pierce's property and exhaust everything. Literally, from the day that that lot was made, long before Mr.
So what records are available?
Pretty much, pretty much, I I I mean, yeah, the the pertinent thing is for when that wall was built, so. Wh- whenever I can find the earliest record for that. If there's anything that speaks to how that maintains or who's responsible for maintenance. I will bring that force to Mr. Pierce, of course, and I'll bring it before you. But, as again, without knowing who. That responsibility falls on for sure, I I I've just at cursory glance. There's nothing to suggest to me that the town. Would have any responsibility for that, so you're probably looking at the state and. Just because I haven't found anything yet doesn't mean it doesn't exist, but you wanna have some guidance for. Mr. Pierce as to what needs to be done, it may not have to be. An engineer that gets involved right off the bat, but. You are all layman, you don't do this work in the trades that Mr. Pierce does on a day to day basis. None of us work with FEMA. Or regulatory floodways for that matter, this is in one of them. Okay, so, y- you're you're gonna want to have. The commission should consider having someone with that kind of knowledge. Not exactly saying who that might be, but just someone who has that knowledge to weigh in. On what the appropriate course of action would be.
Do you have a recommendation for what types of professionals?
As as I mentioned to Mr. Pierce, when I was out with him on his property. A few weeks ago. The gentleman who prepared that subdivision now. Is an engineer. I I don't know what his familiarity is with floodways or retaining walls, but. In my experience, asking a question. I I I would be surprised if someone charged for that. Right, yeah, that's, that's fair, but we're not even going there, at least not at this point, okay? So, it never hurts to ask. And, um, I think it's worth. Having that context and that and that kind of feedback. To, for for the commission to say, you know, okay, this is, this is who can can weigh in on this, this is who. You may want to consider getting reports from, but without having even gone there yet. You know.
We 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 do receive applications that are not leaked.
You do.
Or that we request more information after they've been opened.
That's right, you do.
So this isn't a, you know, an end of the road thing.
No, no, a- and 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 I don't, I. Again, I I don't interpret this commission's actions right now to suggest that. You don't want Mr. Bruce to be able to do anything, because you, right, no, 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 of course, I just. Just a matter of making sure that that's out there for everybody, okay, so, but it's a, it's a matter of. It's 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 a matter of, if we're gonna do this. We wanna make sure everybody's on the same page and that everybody gets what they need.
Yep.
In a responsible and reasonable manner.
I don't see, I don't see how the state would not.
Um, just, I've known the property for as long as, uh, Bruce has owned it, um, helped him. Rebuild the home there, helped him build the barn up, lived in the cottage out in the back, um, for many years. In my thirty, I don't know how many years is it now, thirty some years of knowing the property. Never seen the water go over the top of that wall coming down East Brook. Uh, or East Swamp Road, the water didn't break the top of the wall on a thousand year storm. The chances of getting another storm like that are are, well. I guess we could reach in the bag and pull it tomorrow, but, um.
They're good.
That, that, that being said, we've had many hundred year storms come through. And there's rocks where there were no rocks, and then. Four days later, we get another big storm and those rocks are gone, you know, it it constantly changes, we know a water course is gonna change. For forever, so to, to, you know, you know, I I know. Having been on planning and zoning for many, many years, I understand what you all have to do with. That book that's right in front of you and and you have to go to that, but. There were several bridges out on Route thirty four that were engineered and built. And disappeared in that thousand year storm, there were bridges all over this area that disappeared and they were all engineered. Um, so.
I don't think they were engineered for what we got hit with.
Well, that's right, and how do you engineer for that? And and do you engineer for a two thousand year storm? We we don't know, we don't know what's gonna hit us, but but, you know, and and. You know, I I, with all due respect, because I know your job is not easy sitting over there. Um, I know he's just very frustrated because he he was gonna dive right in and do it, and he said. I wanna do it the right way, I wanna go to the state and I wanted to go to the, you know, the company that does the bridges and. Like he says, he just does stuff, if it's broken, he fixes it, if it needs to be built, he builds it, um. So to to wait and try to do it the right way. You know, to to end up in a position like this where I know he's more frustrated than he 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 likes to be, cuz he's a pretty laid back guy all the time. Um, it's just, it's hard to sit back and watch that, and I and I I know you all understand that, but. You know, sometimes the engineer. Doesn't pick up on all, we all know that, we've.
Maybe the survey, you know, like Dave said, maybe the person who did the survey come back and says, yes, that would work.
Can I toss out my dip for everybody? Okay, so. Everybody obviously knows what's on my plate in terms of weapons, I have. That other application that you both patiently waited through, that I have to, that I have to review, and I have this. I have planning and zoning, uh, that means tomorrow night, Tuesday, so unfortunately tomorrow I'll be pretty busy, but Wednesday. Wednesday, my calendar bearing a couple inspections that I have is pretty open. Whatever free time I have on Wednesday. That clerk's office is where I'm going. That record, the record maps that we have here, that's where I'm going to look into this, okay? What I would suggest to the weapons commission, if time is of the essence. And Mr. Pierce to be able to go out there and do some work. I think it may be who of the board to consider having some kind of special meeting where we discuss this again. And. With whatever I have found in the time between Wednesday. And whenever you guys wanna schedule a special meeting, which I don't know what your availability is, I I apologize for. Uh, offering, huh, uh, you guys to 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 meet again, but but I I think if if we if we wanna have this discussion moved. In a positive direction, that we stay on top.
I have no issues on my end with scheduling another meeting to come here and try and work on this.
I I think we want the gentleman to be able to do the work, we just have to follow the guidelines that we've given, so absolutely, I'll come back tomorrow, that's what.
Right, wo- would you guys want to go out there and take a look at this yourselves?
Is there any way we can do that? I was gonna ask.
You could probably stand on the side of three oh two and.
I mean, it's hard to see the erosion on my side. Um, from standing on the wall, but the other side, you could see the erosion underneath. Very clearly, um, just, just remember that my side is just as bad. That's all, but you can go.
I think those photos tell.
You know what, I'm not, I'm not questioning it has to be done, I'm not questioning that gentleman knows what he's doing. I just have to follow the guideline that's laid out, and so I don't need a sidewalk cuz. The pictures show everything, I know he knows what he's doing, it's that third hurdle that it's, it's, I have to follow, I have no doubt.
I mean, it's what it.
I commend them for.
To put it in perspective, how I look at it, it's like you're driving down the road, you gotta low tire. You gotta pump in the back, are you gonna pump it up or are you gonna drive with a low tire? You're gonna pump the thing up, you don't wanna get a flat, that's where I'm at, I don't wanna get a flat, I wanna, I wanna put the rock in there. And 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 at least, at least it'll be better. Maybe not a thousand year flood, but I'm willing to take that chance, you know? And if it washes away, I'm like six hundred more feet of 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 brook. Then then I'll do it again and whatever, next year, thirty years from now.
The reason the regulations are there is because it can have wider impacts than just your.
I do understand that, I do, I mean, if 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 my property, if the brick ended and there was a house there. I understand, but six hundred feet away, you know, six hundred feet. If 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 you're worried about the three, the the two truckloads of material that I put in. Versus the four thousand truckloads that that washed away that. Then then we're not on the same page, we're just not.
I understand, I appreciate your frustration.
So if, a little more understanding on how that works, that's probably the steepest. Um, part of that water course that rolls right through underneath that bridge. Once it, once it gets through and and around the the sharper bend that Dave was showing you before. It almost goes to a a flat level and the the water just immediately loses all its energy.
That's why my whole backyard is swamp, is is wetlands, because it disperses all up there, yeah. So it isn't like it's, you know, just.
And ultimately, thi- this is a, you know, it's an interesting conversation, and I, again, like I have a great deal of empathy for the situation, I. Homes are incredibly frustrating to own and. Get it, but my my stance doesn't change, I still think we have to follow what we have to follow, because if we don't do it here. It sets us up for all kinds of issues. So, do you feel like we have fulfilled what you wanted us to in this discussion?
Well, it's it's not, it's not up to me. Yeah, um. If, as so long as there's a mutual understanding between what. Is being sought for and how that's achieved by both parties. Then that's really all you can ask for, I I I, I think it's worth making sure that that's the case. Before the con- the discussion on this at least concludes for this evening. Would you guys want to have a special meeting to follow up on this?
Would you like us to hold a special meeting to follow up on this?
The the question is, if you need an engineer, no, we don't need no meeting, we're, the 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 conversation is over.
I I don't know if it's an engineer or what, we would need someone.
Well, I don't know.
I I'm not.
I don't know, I I I don't know.
I don't, but but that's, yes, I think that. My understanding of the commission's position, and you're all welcome to try, is that yes, we would need some sort of a professional who was able to approve the.
Find. It would have to. We would need to find that answer and make sure that it follows in the guidelines that you guys set forth historically, I don't necessarily. I would say.
Something we said is.
The guidelines, the guidelines to which that you guys need to adhere to, but. If he has a proposal. If we can provide him the guidelines and then he can make a proposal that fits within those guidelines that need to be approved by somebody, then. Then we're okay, so why don't we start the conversation with that side, you're gonna expect, you're gonna look to see if we can expand all limits on Wednesday.
Of course.
Outside of this.
Yeah.
And then I think that the best thing to do would be for us to find the most minimally invasive. Way of providing guidelines for him to revise what we need without having to go nuts with requirements, right?
You have to follow the guidelines.
Not less than, just put it in bullet point with what we.
Just in the requirement for a permit, if you can't permit it as a right, why doesn't he just submit his, uh, permit application?
Yeah.
That's right, but we have to ask him for what materials we want provided with that application, and what I was trying to say the day before was. You could, if you choose to follow that path and you submit a permit and we've determined that we want more materials, and that's a discussion that we have. In the meeting, just like you watched here before where we were discussing whether we wanted more. Information brought before us in order to decide if we could. Ultimately approve or deny the the application. Um, is it worth this discussing? The ramifications for not going through the process?
Well, I I, no, I mean, just go, I I apologize, um. Yeah, it it's, I, because it, you're you're essentially going down the the trail of enforcement actions. And I and I think it's very counterproductive for a private property owner's time and for this commission's time. To go through that exercise when everybody already knows the context. There's a, through the, I'll read yours, a set of retaining walls that mine needs swamp broke that needs repair.
It's it's just like, to me, use a permit that was here before. If a homeowner came with that permit, I would again say, I mean, in G A or the Tommy six inch pipe, I I I need some professional.
Right.
To be able to.
I think what I was asking was more, I was responding to something that our property owner had said in his frustration, which again, I empathize with. About just accepting a fine, and I'm not sure that he's aware of what actually the process is for not.
Yeah, it 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 would not be as simple as paying a penalty. And and having this this situation be absolved because the fine was paid, the. The the fine that is associated with enforcement actions is meant to be more of a deterrent. Because, you know, de- de- depending on how the the commission wants to follow through with. What it's able to do with within what it's able, yeah, th- those those, that fine could be more than just a a flat fee. That that fine could include either removing that material. To have things go back to the way they were, which would be unfortunate, because we're trying to, everybody's trying to get this fixed. Or what the fees would be to ultimately do this the right way in the first place to begin with.
I just, and I've.
But how would they, how would you, how would they able? It's my, if it's my property. If it's my property and I put rock in my property, I know it's wetlands, but it's my property. You would have the, you would be able to have somebody fix it?
The way? No, the the, this. This commission would not be able to have someone that. This commission would not be able to have someone that this commission could not order someone else to go on your property to do that work. It it would be, it would be something that you would have.
So that as you figure out where, how you want to proceed, that you have a a really full, clear picture of what happens because I don't think that you have an accurate picture of what happens and 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 genuinely, out of respect for you and and the choices that you're making, I want you to know so that you can make an informed decision.
Thank you.
I really do.
Cause I did ask Dave the other day, and I mean, I didn't get an answer, but I would like.
I don't want you to hear it as a threat because that is not what is centered in this conversation.
I understand you all are trying to do your job. But I don't know, there is a, there is a, there is a person, an engineer, that can engineer a dry rock wall. It's it's impossible, there's no such thing as engineering a dry wall, it's it's impossible.
Okay, but but again, as I advise Mr. Pierce.
What do you mean by drywall?
As I advise Mr. Pierce, there was already one expert who went out and assisted Mr. Pierce in the past, granted, with nothing physical, it was all on paper. But to go back to them a- as a reference, to ask them a question for your own knowledge more than anything else, I don't see what calls.
I I'll ask them though, though, sure, I'll ask them.
And 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 I think, I think that would be worse your understanding, because then, because then, who, without having been here, he may have done that. I I don't know how many times, or he may so, he may know someone who does. But without having that knowledge in the room to speak to that, we're we're all the same spot. So i- i- it serves everybody.
So does it make sense for us to reconvene and have a special session so that we can come back together and see where we're at after Dave has gathered information? You've gathered information, we genuinely want to work with you to help you resolve the problem and don't want this to be a contentious relationship.
When would you want to schedule a special meeting?
Uh, no, Mondays are good for me, but I I defer to.
I was thinking Monday.
I'll make it happen if I don't want it, I'm personally.
Rather do another night, we can look at other nights.
Time to talk to and take few time to look at stuff.
Yeah, I I I I, so so the next regular meeting is on the twenty fourth. Okay, President's Day, which is the Monday before that is a holiday. I think we'd all be doing ourselves a disservice to expect that we can have turnaround in a week. So I don't know what the commission's availability for February tenth is.
I'll make it happen.
But that may be a logical day for everybody to come back.
I'm gonna check my schedule. Yeah, I can make that happen. Can you be here on the tenth?
I will, yeah, I will make it happen for me. So I guess my question is in the interim, what are we, we know you're gonna do for progress?
Yeah, I've got my work out for me.
Yeah, we know you're gonna do for progress. Is there anything that we can do or that we can request from Mr. Pierce for progress? Even if it's a step in the direction.
He knows what we're looking for for a permit, we have to follow those guidelines, he's gonna my understanding is talk to that gentleman, I I don't know, yes.
Okay.
Maybe that wasn't qualified for.
So I believe I need to ask for someone to propose a motion for us to hold a special meeting in order to discuss forty one Dodge in town road.
Motion made.
For February tenth at seventeen.
A second.
Here, in meeting room.
Here in meeting room A, A?
D.
D.
Meeting room D and by Zoom, uh, okay, any discussion? Hearing none, let's call a vote. Aye.
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 And so moved, so we'll put that on the calendar and look forward to continuing the discussion with you.
Sounds good. Thank you for the discussion.
Thanks for sending to the first one, too.
It's all good.
Sure.
Doug's a good guy, I listen to.
I owe you a beer, I wonder where I can get you one.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you guys for putting up with us.
I'd love to stop by.
Thank you for.
No, no disrespect.
Not at all.
I hope that, I don't know, but I hope that you pursued like your home insurance and things of that nature as well.
No, I don't use insurance, so I have it, I just don't use it. I like to do stuff my, I like to, you know, and how would they fix it anyhow? They'd have to go through all of you.
They might give you the money, they might pay for it, right?
Yeah, I don't know, it'd be a stretch.
I don't know.
You'll wind up paying for it.
Yeah, oh yeah, you pay for it after.
Dave, do you ever go home and collapse?
What's that mean?
You're always doing something for someone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all, have a great night.
All right, moving right along at nine o'clock nearly, um.
Best guy.
All right, um, we have our special meeting minutes from twelve nine twenty twenty four, do we have enough people here for?
I was there for that, that's one that you called me in on?
Yes.
It's one that you called me in on.
I believe that is correct, and you were here, and you were not able to make it.
It was just you and me.
Oh, it is three, so was Nico at that meeting?
Yeah, it was.
Okay, so we have three of us, so.
You have the three that were there?
I was the third.
Have we all had the opportunity to review those meeting minutes from call nine?
Yes, I did.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion to approve the special meeting minutes from twelve nine twenty twenty four.
Second.
So moved.
So moved, seconded, uh, any discussion, hearing none, I'll call a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Okay, so.
Do I have to abstain?
Yes.
Yes.
You don't get to vote.
I have to abstain.
Thank you for abstaining, okay, so three eyes and then the convention, moving right along. We have an invoice from Hurst Connecticut Media Group in the amount of one hundred and fifty two dollars and eighty cents.
Make a motion and pay that invoice.
Thank you, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Kevin, uh, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Aye.
Aye.
So moved. It is on it, I'm sure.
Yeah, I got it.
And continue, moving right along, we have another invoice from Northwest Conservation District municipal funding request in the amount of two thousand six hundred dollars, I.
Discussion.
This, this request is normally made in July. And the commission will remember that this last request came this past July. I don't know where their timing switch is coming from. Maybe it, maybe they've changed how they organize their fiscal year.
That was my guess.
But but this is, but this is what that that request is for. And this is, this is for fiscal, this is for this year, twenty twenty five.
How much did we pay last year?
The same amount, twenty six hundred.
I I, for discussion purposes, I would like to find out why they're billing us now, because I pay, we paid in July for a year that goes to July, why am I getting billed now, like, is it starting now, what happened today?
No, that's what we have, you know.
This is our fiscal year.
Oh, but I have a question.
This is the, this is the request from the conservation district.
Oh, this is the conservation district. Cause they say twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. I'm assuming that they have a half year convention still anyways.
Hey, guys.
Yeah, but we paid the last thing from last year with it.
Yeah, which if we paid in July, it should have went to deferred and it, the deferred revenue should last for twelve months regardless as. This is accounting one on one here. It doesn't matter if they change their fiscal year, they should not be invoicing us again, because if it covers a year, it goes.
I would just ask for, I would ask for clarification.
I'd ask one last one. What timeframe the last one covered and what timeframe does this one cover, and if there's overlap, why?
And if it's a huge difference, why?
Accounting controller one on one here.
I concur.
What I'm, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna take all the comments all four of you made, listen to this recording again and put them in an email, because I am not an accountant myself. Finances are as removed for me as the man on the moon, so.
Do you want me to email you with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I can email you with that.
Okay.
So.
That that's, that's my.
Is there a penalty or a due date on this invoice?
The there is none, uh, that's a good question, Madam Chair, there is not, there is one that is not mentioned on this on this form, I I would presume that they would appreciate this contribution being made sooner rather than.
Yeah, there 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 can be a penalty because this is not a net due for some, they didn't provide us a service. We're prepaying for a service.
No, the service started in January and goes through the end of December.
Should we request it? It's not, it's not a service that they've already provided to us, it's a service that we can gain access to, correct?
So if if you look at the second page, i- i- it tells you what they provide. The the commission may not always see those benefits on the front lines per se. Um, but it's worth knowing that this district is well, there there is essentially a resource that's available for you at any time you ask.
Yeah, I I'm not disagreeing with.
There's there's not gonna be.
For it, I just, I don't understand why all of a sudden it switched to the same price. Like if they said like thirteen hundred, I'd be like, all right, that makes sense, I feel, you know, but like to know why.
My question that I'm not asking you to ask them is why were they billing in July in the first place if this is meant to cover from January to December?
I don't know. That depends on what their fiscal year is, but I'm gonna assume that their fiscal year ran mid-year convention.
Does it say, I don't have a.
If they don't say, they don't say.
Let me.
I'm gonna email you with that.
Hang on. So I don't have anything from, yeah.
Do you have the last, no, this is the bill.
So sneaky, sneaky, sneaky.
They did not provide you proper timeframes. Cause this is what they send you to pay, right?
Right, hang on here, I'm I'm looking at, I'm trying to find their last, um.
Invoice.
Payment.
I think this constitutes their invoice because technically, things like this aren't gonna be on a net term, so they don't have to be.
This one.
Yeah, my, welcome to my fucking world, all day, every day, I'm glad I can be helpful. I got, that that, why I'm gonna need to recuse myself is, um Mr. Christian's wife works for me and she's um in HR, she does some like the accounting stuff for me, but she's not an accountant either.
His or his?
Uh, no, Steve works for me, uh, Steve works for me, um, as well, he was, he's the management of, he's shop management prior to her downstairs, so he takes care of, um, everything, shop oriented. And then his wife is, Mr. Christian's wife, Carolyn is HR, and she also does a lot of the accounting duties, when I start talking accounting, she's, she's like.
So with that, um, conflict on the table, I'd just like to bring it to the other members here attention that if that's gonna be something that we're gonna be voting on, tendence is going to start to get very tight.
Yeah, I have to recuse myself from anything that 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 has to do with the application.
So we need everybody else.
I'll be here for all conversations and questions.
I've been to one meeting in thirty three years.
Can I bring up the invoice from twenty twenty four?
Yeah.
From the Northwest Conservation District up on the screen?
Yeah, cool. That would be your screen somewhere.
Yeah, sure. Oh dear, I just had.
That's the guy. As part of this discussion, guys, can we use this program for the technical reviews which they list here to of development projects adjacent to sensitive natural resources such as wetlands, rivers, uh to make decisions concerning applications, can we just refer these people to uh sign off on said application?
I I.
I'm not sure.
That's illegal.
Hear my question?
Yeah, I did.
I would wanna ask them.
Yeah.
I instinct is to ask.
Yeah, sure.
This is our disposal.
I I can always advise Mr. Pierce, and the gentleman that he asked may very well say the same thing. Uh, no, it it's it's the commission that is providing the the direct funding. I I don't, I don't know.
I don't have my money.
Right, I, there there's, there's money that's allocated in in, I believe it's allocated in in the the town's budget for this payment, okay, so 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 the the taxpayer indirectly is is contributing towards the conservation districts running.
So can we use it?
Yeah, you you guys can can request it anytime, I I would say.
You're asking if this gentleman can use, I don't believe so.
Well.
For us to use it to say, what if.
For us to review it, yes.
Right. But they may not be able to provide the information that we need in order to.
If.
Well, can we share with these people and they can weigh in on this?
Right, so 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 the if, to go back to forty one Dodge. If there was an application that was brought before the commission and the commission asked Northwest Conservation District to conduct what's called a peer review.
Yep.
The the conservation district would provide that service, but you as as the commission would have the ultimate discretion to say, okay, this is a peer review, the applicant pays for it. And that's just part of your regulations that they do that.
So he's still would pay for it, the applicant. Which he seemed concerned about doing.
But a peer review is a lot cheaper than.
What are we talking about?
I I.
It will do what's right, because this is not on me, I'm just.
I don't know if this agency is the appropriate agency for us to be utilizing to approve or deny the work that he.
That's a decision that.
To do, right, so theoretically, could we refer anything to them theoretically if it's appropriate, they're at our disposal to have a peer review? The answer is theoretically, yes.
Saying, what did you say, you don't know if it's up to us if we're the ones who should be deciding whether or how this.
No, I'm saying I don't know what he's gonna bring before us hypothetically, and whether or not they're the ones that should sign off on it. It sounds smelly, if you're saying, is this a resource we can export to this home longer to.
They might just say that.
So I'm very, very curious, so. Can can we go back to the topic at hand just briefly while I have this up on the screen?
Yes.
Yeah, I got it.
So, um, I'm I'm going to give the Northwest Conservation District benefit of the doubt and say this bill or this invoice or whatever you wanna call it, this request, while it was received in July, its intent was to cover twenty twenty four, not part of twenty twenty three going into twenty four, thus twenty twenty four. Okay, um, I can always go out, reach out to the Northwest Conservation District to clarify that with your guidance, um.
I'm gonna say, don't pay them.
So you don't have to go like.
Yeah.
There's a fire.
Ask them for an unofficial voice for it.
Okay.
And then, and then you'll know from the start, they shouldn't, like the last one's somewhere down the south, does that make sense?
Okay.
There you go, like, and it just takes all the chaos out of what any other.
This is why. We need to use it when it's appropriate to use it, so they're, they're available to us to use when when we need them, but that doesn't mean that we should use them all of the time, it means we should use them in situations that are appropriate.
Does the commission wanna entertain a motion to table this item to the commission's next meeting?
Sure, would you mind taking on investigating question that Kevin?
Absolutely, that that'll be all I'm going to do this for Wednesday.
Look at you, you're gonna be a busy.
Well, for this. That one thing that I just told you kind of alleviates all those questions that you need to ask. Right, you'll you'll know based on start date, we we made a simple call, you've got it.
Yeah, so do we, are we?
We're gonna know, they're gonna send us an invoice.
Are we looking to push this to the next meeting before we sign off on it?
Yeah, yeah, let's push it to the next meeting if that's okay.
It's fine, would you mind making a motion to go ahead and table this discussion until our next regular meeting?
I would love to make a motion to table the discussion for the Northwest Conservation District invoice for twenty six hundred dollars into our next regular meeting.
On February twenty four.
Twenty fourth.
Twenty twenty five.
Twenty five.
Meeting room D.
Meeting room D, seven P M.
At seven P M. Thank you, Amanda, do I hear a second, Nico, we have a second, do we have any discussion? Hearing none, I call a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
I I love it.
And we pass, all right, moving along from here. Full member vacancy, did you want to address that one, Dave?
I will do so as efficiently as we can.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Imprada uh submitted his resignation as a full member to this commission uh in early October by town charter. By town charter, uh, the, uh, first selectman, uh, has discretion to appoint, uh, someone from Mister Imparta's party. To fill that vacancy for, uh, I, I, to my understanding, the remainder of his term. Um, I believe they would have to go through an election, uh, at this current cycle to do so. But then they would be able to act as a member for the rest of Mister Imparta's term. That being said. The, uh, board of selectmen has to do that within sixty days of receiving that resignation.
The board of selectmen or the Republican Town Committee?
Board of Selectmen.
Oh, has to appoint.
Right.
Going to appoint, thank you.
Those, if everybody can do their math.
Best.
Right, so if you look, go back to the charter, which the town clerk advised me to, a section. Whose letters and numbers I can't recite off the top of my head, uh, but it essentially says, if that period has passed, the commission. Commit that appointment, of course, with respect to preserving the seats party and, and all that. And whatever other procedures that have to be adhered to. Um, I don't know if this commission has reached out to the RTC. If you want to engage in doing that and submit a letter to them to do that. So that way we can get the seat filled, cause I don't know about you guys, but I would hate this board to be the only. One in Bethel that doesn't have all of its seats filled, and right now you are.
So, I mean, I'm okay with it.
You're okay if you have to the RTC?
Should we do that? I mean, I don't mind doing it.
I would love to have them fill the seat.
Yeah, if you, cause you are. Are you doing Republican in the group right now?
Jorge is also, and so is Jay, present here in this meeting.
I'm just gonna ask you, I think I had a thought.
Really?
No, I, I, no, I just thought that, I thought I saw you in some of the meetings that we were on when I first got involved.
Not Republican, I mean, that one.
Oh, that, that, that's, that's the only, that was a little.
Nico, I have a question. You have any friends that, uh, Republicans that?
Do I have any friends who are Republicans?
That, that would be interesting because you're very, you're very valid.
Yes.
And a Republican or a straight Republican?
I mean, I tried, that, that was.
No, you're not, you're very, you're very.
I feel like, I thought, I, I thought, I was gonna ask you, I thought I maybe did it.
I'm on the RTC, but I'm not very good at being political. I just have to be on the RTC.
You know, but you don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
More Republicans, cause you're on the RTC.
I, I just like read more, I guess.
So Kevin, if you're willing to connect with, is, is Dan, no, it's not, it's, um.
I thought it was Dan.
Nope, it's.
See, you're telling me this is not political, I am.
It's the, it's our selectman, his name is falling out of my head.
Oh, to, to Turzian.
Yes.
Turzian, right?
I believe that he chairs the RTC.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You could, if you don't mind.
No, no, I got it, that guy's not ready.
Already, reaching out and asking, I, I will tell you that I don't have, I've, I've reached out to everyone that I know to reach out to already, asking them to please. Spread the word among Republicans and see if anyone would step up.
I have an idea. Sorry to interrupt.
And I've got no traction.
I'm not gonna be able to get Steve back on.
Brian. What about Brian?
Brian who?
Uh. What's his name?
Blanchett?
Blanchett. I don't know what is, did I have affiliations?
It matters when. And, and you know, I, I mean, that's fine.
He was like getting into the wetlands.
Well, that's, that's fine. He would have to recuse himself from anything involved with that. But anyway, whatever, I, I, I don't.
True.
Anyway, if you, yeah, if you're willing to like.
I'd say I talked to some of my Republican friends, I just don't have friends.
Right.
I heard they're not Republicans, they just don't have friends.
Anything you can do would be fantastic. Anything you can do would be fantastic. Anything you can do would be fantastic. Okay.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
About along these lines, I noticed like, how many committee members are there for Wetlands if actually?
Five and two alternates.
So you have seven. How is it when I go to zoning board, they have like fifteen people? What?
This is a great question for the Republican Town Committee.
What is it that creates?
They have the majority of the seats, but.
I don't give a shit. I'm responsible for my damn self. I don't care what they do or where they do it.
What I'm saying, Kevin, is I would.
I'm responsible for my damn self.
We would love for the RTC to provide us with some passionate people who will come to the meetings and participate.
Will you give us? I, I'm not so much, I'm, I'm saying if.
Or it.
I, I'm saying.
That's not, that has nothing to do with your, that has to do with your.
You can't have the seats, the people that they're appointing.
I agree, I know.
I'm not saying who shows up, who doesn't. I'm saying we have seven members on this board. What makes this board seven members and?
We have five and two alternates.
The five and two alternates. What makes the zoning board have like twelve?
That's the charter.
Really?
Yeah.
I just, I was amazed. Like every time I come, it's like, well, like, they don't have enough room to fit people.
I don't think we've ever had seven in the room.
Isn't this enough? Cause what if, I feel like, would like bear.
I'm gonna say.
Well, if it's not you guys, like, I don't expect, I never expect anyone else to show up.
I'm not saying five and two are not enough. I'm just amazed how it's like.
Well, probably you're kinda screwed because like when you guys had to call me, and I never mind helping, but that was like the one of two times in the last two, three years that I haven't been able to show up. Yeah, but I also don't, I never mind taking a call. It's, it's.
So ca- calling attention to the fact that it's now nine twenty.
Well, ten to four.
Is there more discussion on this? All right, do we all have tasks? I have no idea.
Well, I gotta talk to Turzian and.
You're, you're fine.
Just with the timeline as my invoice in.
I would appreciate it, huh?
Thank you.
I've got a big to-do list, I'm really sorry.
Yeah, do you want me to call him? Do you want me?
No, let, let me take care of it because I have, I have a report with the Conservation District.
Now just, I'll, I'll email you.
You, you, you gotta, you gotta tell Moses what to say when he's.
Gotta, gotta, I just, oh, I just finished Exodus and I'm on, oh, I'm, I got it. Right, Moses is literally about to pass away, like. About to start Joshua, he's one twenty.
Can we put a sign up on the, on the library?
No.
Vacancy.
You can reach out to your friends.
Vacancy.
Gentlemen, we have a couple more things to get through and I have a very early day as always. Okay, so, uh, we need, we have a stack report.
Oh, God. I do have a national report. Um, I had a conversation with, uh, the commission's largest counsel, Attorney Chuck Andrews today. He, uh, he got a call.
I just think.
He, he got a, he, he, um, has a date for a status conference with Denver Superior Court that's going to happen on February tenth. The same day as this commission's special meeting. Um, during that status conference, um, he'll have another date. Uh, where they discuss, uh, the timeline to do a briefing schedule. So in other words, myself and Amanda will be essentially preparing a return of record. Transcripts of all the meetings where we discussed that property and that application and all the associated documents for applications to go to chalk. Where he appears on the court, on the commission's behalf before a judge. To represent the commission and the appeal of the commission's decision. If you guys wanna hold an executive session and discuss that in the future, um, we can certainly entertain that. I don't have anything else for you at this time.
Will you have anything on February tenth when we meet? Is it worth adding an executive session to?
Five, five, I wouldn't think so.
I wouldn't think so either, okay.
Um, but, but.
Easier to bulk that with other stuff.
But for the, for the twenty-fourth, definitely.
I was just.
Oh, there you go, twenty-fourth.
I was just thinking one of the things, creating, as Rothwell wrote, if I remember correctly, is him needing to have an engineered document. Judge come back and says, no, he doesn't. Well, that kinda sets a precedent for other things.
That's fine, then we'll have more information.